Call the meeting to order at 6:08 PM. Roll call of directors, please.
Barnes?
Here.
Baumann?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Hansen?
Here.
Hermaning?
Here.
Kaiser?
Mayple?
Here.
Stankowski?
Here.
Zebro?
Yes.
And Anna.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll seek an approval of the agenda, please.
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second it.
Motion by Zebro, second by Gorman to approve the agenda. Any corrections or changes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, special presentation, discussion and possible decision, the PTO annual donation.
Yeah, I'd like to very much thank the PTO members for coming in and with the donation, Mr. Hermaning, I think there's gonna be a picture.
Who's doing it?
You? Maybe me, but I've been told my pictures aren't great.
Kristi, did you tell him that?
No, no. Previous. It's okay if you had. I can do it. I got it, I got it. I will do my best.
Oh, take a picture.
Take a photo.
The PTO is making a donation to the school district of $22,500 from our annual fundraiser this year.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
And make a couple, make sure I get through. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And for the last PTO meeting that I attended, I think this is one of the most successful fundraisers in a decade.
At least as long. I've been treasurer since 2015 and this is the highest.
So, and one of the things that I know changed was that they did it all online. So, they had made some changes and made some adjustments and those adjustments led to the highest fundraising total. And we're very appreciative for the donation, which will be split between the buildings like we had talked about. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
Right. Motion by Hanson, second by Baumann to accept the donation with appreciation from the PTO of $22,500. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. By the way, is Mr. Kaiser on?
He didn't join.
He did not. Thank you. I didn't, I wasn't aware. You know, Mike was ill. He called me this late afternoon. So, you know, it wasn't just a no show. Item number six, approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting, October 26th.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Zebro.
I'll second.
Second by Gorman. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. By the way, is Mr. Kaiser on?
He didn't join.
He did not. Thank you. I didn't, I wasn't aware. You know, Mike was ill. He called me this late afternoon. So, you know, it wasn't just a no show. Item number six, approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting, October 26th.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Zebro.
I'll second.
Second by Gorman. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Barnes, yes. Item number seven is the public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board agenda. Does anybody wish to address the board this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item eight, student board report.
Yeah, thank you. So, we've been really busy at the high school this month and continue to be busy with our NHS club having a food drive this week for the food pantry in the Hope Center. Our student senate members had a blood drive this week, which was very successful in turnout. Our athletics went very well this season, this fall season. Our swim team placed its first ever swimmer in the sectional podium. Football ended up at level two. Boys soccer and girls volleyball both finished that sectional runner-ups. As well as our Mozzie Manufacturing Club, students are working on railings, saddle stands, and basketball racks for our community members. But all of our groups have been busy and active and we're excited for the winter.
Thank you. Any questions?
One note for the board is that Mozzie Manufacturing, which is listed up there as the second last piece, about a piece that was worked on by Mr. Kinkle, I believe, as well as others and students, is now on display at Mozzie Brewing. But that was on the presentation as well. It is quite the piece. If you've been inside the facility, thank you for that and to the students and all that were involved in that presentation of student and staff work in the community. Permanent, it looks like. So, well done.
I guess I have a question. How can the community ask for one of those items? Because it says for community members. You know, if somebody wanted a railing or the saddle stand.
Oh, yeah.
Right. I think they would reach out.
Reach out to me.
Yeah.
So, you can send an email to Kristy Heck Northball and we schedule it in and let you know if it's something that we can do or not.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
A suggestion perhaps, with my team, because this is at this time of year only, right?
Mozzie Manufacturing runs all year.
It does. So, something like that perhaps could be in the link one of the times each year.
Yeah.
Notifies the broader community. Okay. Thank you for your report. As always, we know you have other responsibilities. As a student, you are welcome to stay for whatever part of the meeting you wish to, but you also can be excused whenever. Okay? Item number nine is the consent agendas. We do have a request to pull from the Curriculum and Standards Committee the industrial technology presentation.
I would like to pull from the finance, the flagpole purchase that's fighting.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
To approve the remainder of the consent agenda. Gorman?
Yep.
Second by Barnes. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So, we move right into those then, correct?
We move into the individual items, yeah.
So, the first one then would be item 5A, being that finance building is prior to the Curriculum and Standards Committee in the agenda. So, item 5A is the flagpole.
All right. I'm jumping into that right now. Item 5A is, there was a request by some board members to possibly position a flagpole between a few fields, between the football field and the baseball field. And there's several different options that are listed here. There's a picture rendering on the bottom with the general location where, you know, where the flag is right now is not really viewable from either of the fields. So...
Was there action by the committee?
The action was to bring it to the full board.
Okay. Very good.
Just wanted to, we felt it was important that the full board buy it.
Understood. Before we would have a discussion, is anybody interested in making a motion? Or we can move right into a discussion alternatively. Megan? Your questions?
No, I didn't really have any questions. We had come to this last month and then asked Steve to bring us some quotes for even larger flags, which he did. So, he came back with the 60, 70, and 80 foot options from three different companies, Eau Claire, Wauwatoza, and Green Bay. And he had kind of said that the Fly Me flag out of Green Bay was kind of the company he was thinking of.
Okay.
So, Peter, are you just looking for approval? What was that?
Looking for a motion from the board. The decision coming from the full board instead of from committee.
Okay. And what did you, your committee kind of?
We did not vote on one. Did not make a motion on one. No, we did not.
So, for perspective, why the Fly Me flag company? Is there rationale?
Well, there, I call all the vendors and they were, they got back there right away every time I called them. So, I had a good feeling when I did speak to them. Their pricing is pretty comparable in line depending what model you go with. And it's, you know, it's interesting, you really look at the flag size because it also changes the age of the pole, you know? So, when you get to larger poles, you gotta be careful what you're purchasing, I think. But I think a lot depends what you're looking for. You know, 15 by 25 is a pretty substantial flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll seek an approval of the agenda, please.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Zebro, second by Gorman to approve the agenda. Any corrections or changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Yeah, do we need to...
When we get there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Item number five, special presentation, discussion and possible decision, the PTO annual donation.
Yeah, I'd like to very much thank the PTO members for coming in and with the donation, Mr. Hermaning, I think there's gonna be a picture.
Who's doing it?
You? Maybe me, but I've been told my pictures aren't great.
Christie, did you tell him that?
Yeah.
No, no. Previous.
It's okay if you had.
I can do it, I got it, I got it. I will do my best.
Oh, take a picture.
Seek a photo.
I thought I was just gonna pull up the photo.
You gotta take it.
Why don't you go ahead?
The PTO is making a donation to the school district of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars from our annual fundraiser this year.
Oh, wow. Thank you. How's that?
Take a couple, make sure I get through. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the last PTO meeting that I attended, I think this is one of the most successful fundraisers in a decade.
At least as long, I've been treasurer since 2015 and this is the highest to have.
So, and one of the things that I know changed was that they did it all online. So, they had made some changes and made some adjustments and those adjustments led to the highest fundraising total. And we're very appreciative for the donation, which will be split between the buildings like we had talked about. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
I'll second.
Motion by Hanson, second by Baumann to accept the donation with appreciation from the PTO of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. By the way, is Mr. Kaiser on?
He didn't join.
He did not, thank you. I didn't, I wasn't aware. You know, Mike was ill, he called me this late afternoon. So, you know, it wasn't just a no show. Item number six, approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting, October 26th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Zebro.
I'll second.
Second by Gorman. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Barnes, yes. Item number seven is the public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board agenda. Does anybody wish to address the board this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item eight, student board report.
Yeah, thank you. So, we've been really busy at the high school this month and continue to be busy with our NHS club, having a food drive this week for the food pantry in the Hope Center. Our student senate members had a blood drive this week, which was very successful in turnout. Our athletics went very well this season, this fall season. Our swim team placed its first ever swimmer in the sectional podium. Football ended up at level two. Boys soccer and girls volleyball, volleyball both finished that sectional runner-up. As well as our Mozzany Manufacturing Club, students are working on railings, saddle stands, and basketball racks for our community members. But all of our groups have been busy and active and we're excited for the winter.
Thank you. Any questions?
One note for the board is that Mozzany Manufacturing, which is listed up there as the second last piece, about a piece that was worked on by Mr. Keiko, I believe, as well as others and students, is now on display at Mozzany Brewing, but that was on the presentation as well. It is quite the piece. If you've been inside the facility, thank you for that and to the students and all that were involved in that presentation of student and staff work in the community. Permanent, it looks like. So, well done.
I guess I have a question. How can the community ask for one of those items? Because it says for community members, you know, if somebody wanted a railing or the saddle stand.
Oh, yeah.
Right. I think they would reach out.
Reach out to me.
Yeah.
So, you can send an email to Kristy Heckendorf Ball and we schedule it in and let you know if it's something that we can do or not.
Thank you, thank you all.
A suggestion perhaps, with my feed of, because this is at this time of year only, right?
Mozzany Manufacturing runs all year.
It does, so something like that perhaps could be in the link, one of the times each year. Notifies the broader community. Okay. Thank you for your report. As always, we know you have other responsibilities. As a student, you are welcome to stay for whatever part of the meeting you wish to, but you also can be excused whenever, okay? Item number nine is the consent agendas. We do have a request to pull from the Curriculum and Standards Committee, the industrial technology presentation.
I would like to pull from the finance, the flagpole purchase that's fighting.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
To approve the remainder of the consent agenda. Gorman? Second by Barnes, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we move right into those then, correct?
Into the individual items, yeah.
So, the first one then would be item five A, being that finance building is prior to the Curriculum and Standards Committee and the agenda. So, item five A is the flagpole.
All right, I'm jumping into that right now. Item five A is, there was a request by some board members to possibly position a flagpole between a few fields, between the football field and the baseball field. And there's several different options that are listed here. There's a picture rendering on the bottom with the general location where, you know, where the flag is right now is not really viewable from either of the fields, so...
Was there action by the committee?
The action was to bring it to the full board.
Okay, very good.
Just wanted to, we felt it was important that the full board buy it.
Understood. Before we would have a discussion, is anybody interested in making a motion? Or we can move right into a discussion alternatively. Megan, your questions?
No, I didn't really have any questions. We had come to this last month and then asked Steve to bring us some quotes for even larger flags, which he did. So, he came back with the sixty, seventy, and eighty foot options from three different companies, Eau Claire, Wautosa, and Green Bay. And he had kinda said that the Flyme Flag out of Green Bay was kind of the company he was thinking was.
So, Peter, are you just looking for approval, is that it?
Looking for a motion from the board. The decision coming from the full board instead of from committee.
Okay, and what, did you, your committee kinda...
We did not vote on one, did not make a motion on one, no we did not.
So, for perspective, why the Flyme Flag company, is there rationale?
Well, there, I call all the vendors and they were, they got back there right away every time I called them, so I had a good feeling when I did speak to them. Their pricing is pretty comparable in line depending what model you go with. You know, it's interesting, you really look at the flag size because it also changes the age of the pole, you know? So, when you get to larger poles, you gotta be careful what you're purchasing, I think. But I think a lot depends what you're looking for, you know? Fifteen by twenty-five is a pretty substantial flag, you know? But you have to have your pole rated for that flag, so you have to be careful what you're doing.
So, if you get a larger one, so for perspective, again, our mountain flag, I know, which is something that many of us had, that we certainly appreciate and have talked about, maybe not as quite as large, but that one is a forty by thirty, I believe, somewhere in that. So, it's, actually it's a sixty by forty, I'm sorry. So, it's definitely larger than this. So, these are all smaller.
Yes.
It's just the point. But that is one hundred feet above ground, twenty feet below ground. So, even if you go with an eighty foot, what is the installation process?
Sure. Yeah, so any of the manufacturers that wants to get these above, they have to come on site and actually, we gotta locate them a spot, of course, and receive what they get, but they will see a concrete cylinder in the ground. And it changes in size, of course, the bigger the flag, deeper it goes and all that, it's all part of the process. But that, the prices I have are all installed, so they would do the pre-work and then just come back and, because it all has to dry and harden before they put the flag. So, you know, it's a two-day process, I would say, to do the work. But mostly they're gonna, let's get too big, they're gonna have a crane involved with it, handling the pole and all that, so. I mean, they're all pretty close to the ballpark. It really depends upon, I guess, the size you're looking for.
And for perspective, is there any city ordinances? I mean, I know the water tower is larger, so for FAA reasons, that should be just fine, but...
Yeah, we would be underneath our lights, because our lights are eighty-four, or equal to, our lights are eighty by eighty foot roughly. So, it gives you perspective of the height we're talking about. If you wanna match the lights while you're getting close to that eighty foot mark, give or take a little bit. That gives you an idea for it.
Steve, do you have any idea what the lights would cost at all?
You know, I, we saw a couple of vendors, it's a funny thing, you know? You would think they would sell the lights with the pole, but they don't want to touch that, because they don't do electrical work, they wanna just basically set that aside. So, I would make some conversation with some local vendors to see what's out there. I'd just buy that local, we would wire it in ourselves, so off the power out there, that's our goal. But we do some uplights, of course, because you're definitely gonna have to have three to catch that, figure that flag, and you gotta, you have to, you know, a foot crane will go quite a bit to reach that, I guess, so. But I, depends on what flag you purchase and then lighting, they're not the same.
And Steve, with all these, that is the pole included?
Yes, that's your pole.
And installation, and with the eighty foot, we would need a crane to do that?
Some reps, depends upon what I've heard, what they were telling me is that, I'm thinking about like sixty foot, they use a crane to set it, you know? So, I'd assume they're all gonna be at crane height at that point in time. The ones, the last month I brought forward, they could do those off their trucks.
Okay.
The height and the weight of the pole is gonna get too much attention, so.
All right.
Question kind of about the whole crane issue then is, are we gonna run into a problem with having to cross the bridge, do you think?
I don't believe so. I really don't. I mean, you know, I spoke to one company that did a lot of work here and I asked them how far, where do you all go? They had the same, you know, issues in every town they're gonna walk into, so, you know, they were a couple, until where we're located, what I'm looking for is gonna be basically a turnkey for me, because I can't help you with this, and that's what they're giving.
And I asked, because of course we had issues trying to move the homes, right? Off the property, they couldn't go across the bridge, so that was an issue. And my thought was, well, then we would obviously go with the Eau Claire company, but if it's not a problem, it's not an issue.
That's what they're telling me, so I'll rely on those folks.
So, my personal view is, as a board member, I like the idea of having it make an impact in our community. I like the idea that, I, listen, I respect the fact that we've got our veterans', you know, park there, but it's, it's not that impactful. I've seen nicer presentations for less relevant areas across the state. And so, I like the idea of it having an impact in our community and it being representative of what we as Mozzany residents and Americans are trying to communicate, or some of us think we ought to be trying to communicate, and that is that we pledge allegiance to this flag. It's not our god, for sure, but it can definitely have an impact on helping people understand what it is we do come close to prioritizing. I could support any of these, by the way, any of the sizes.
So, on that note, I'll make a motion to go with the Flyme Flag Company, as Steve is recommending, for the eighty foot pole, the twenty by thirty flag.
I will second that.
So, we do have a motion by Maple and a second by Hanson. Any discussion? Questions, concerns?
If we choose that option, Steve, do you think there's any way that they would match the flag's enterprise?
I was thinking the same thing.
I will make that phone call to work, you know, I mean, because I mean, they all want the business, I understand that, so. You know, I didn't share anything with any other vendors, what I have in my hand is a new purchase to see it. So, I can make that phone call, see if I can negotiate, maybe some lights they got, but...
And I, I think in the future, too, we can go to area veteran service organizations to see if they can donate and help maintain the upkeep of the flag.
I would agree with that.
Sounds great.
We had discussed also just the whole idea of trying to raise money from local businesses to support this actual purchase as well, so I think that that could happen without it being formalized, so. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the presentation from our tech team.
It's the voucher, oh, yeah, you're right, correct, sorry, that pulled out a consent agenda. All right, okay, sorry, my fault.
So, Christie, you are the department chair, and so we would like you to know that we are looking forward to your presentation.
So, we're the industrial technology education team at the high school. I'm Kristy Heckendorf Ball. I teach graphic design, some of the FALAP courses, and models.
I'm Zach Cockle, I teach the wood and construction classes along with the intro to the welding machine tool and the advanced machine tool.
I'm Brad Olson, I teach engineering as well as a little bit of the manufacturing areas.
Who changes the slides? Okay, so, part, we are underneath career and technical education, which encompasses so many different things within the high school, but the big thing to realize is that we're trying to teach our students how to be life and career ready, so that way we're hitting our students that not only go on to college, but go straight into industry. So, over the course of the last year, we've put a lot of research into what is needed outside of the high school, because we're just a stepping stone for them and we need to make them successful for the future.
You can go ahead and switch it.
One area that we feel is our strongest area in our department is our multimedia design classes. This is the data from Wisconsin that's backing the jobs that are going to be available just in 2021, and there's a huge array. So, based off the data we see here, we really do not feel we need to make a whole lot of changes in multimedia design, which is on the next slide. We currently run three true levels to multimedia design, but there's actually four, so it allows our students to take it all four years, and it is full-heartedly based off of two big things. What do the students need if they choose to go on to college? And what do they need if they don't go on to school? How can we get them set in that job, ready to move forward and be successful walking in day one? You can go ahead and switch it. So, manufacturing, this is our metals area. Over the course of last year, we've made a ton of changes. I don't know who's walked into the metal shop prior to a year ago. It's not a dirty shop anymore. And we have put a lot of blood, sweat, probably tears on my part, into that shop, making things really work and updating things for our students, because we are finding that there's a huge skill gap. And companies will tell you across the board, this is the information that's come out from Wisconsin, and if you go to the next slide, the changes that we're looking to make in metals is course name changes. So, that way students truly know what they're signing up for and they're not scared. So, for example, advanced welding right now is called advanced welding. Really, it's not, advanced can scare the student, so by changing that name and taking it back to welding, it's still a dual-credit course, but now students aren't going, well, I, you know, I struggle in intro to metals, I can't take advanced welding because I'm not there yet. That's not the case, because when they walk into that welding class, we're starting from ground level and we're building up. So, that's why we went to and changed those names. And then the other big change is morphing the machine tool dual-credit course into multiple classes. We would like to start it in intro to metals and finish it in Mozzany Manufacturing for that credit. And the reason for that is with machine tool, there's so much time that goes into manual milling and then looking into CNC, that we can't cram it into semester, but we need to look at the students having the ability to take classes throughout the high school to really choose that career path. So, by changing it up and lengthening it out based off the classes they're in, they're gonna get a larger scope and sequence.
This is a reminder to the board and the community that was listening, the dual-credit courses, the Mozzany School District is the leader in Marathon County in achieved dual-credit courses and savings to families, regularly over four hundred thousand dollars a year in terms of savings to, because it's, they're getting college credit and high school credit at the same time. So, that's when the dual credit just is a reminder of that, sorry.
Thank you. You can go ahead and change slides.
All right, so, woods and construction, we have the opportunity to give our students skills to go into these careers where there's definitely, there's definitely a need, as you can see here, just at construction laborers, for example. Let's go to the next slide. So, one of the big changes here is just a name change from wood technology to basic woodworking, and that's to get students to know what they're taking. Wood technology, you know, if you would've told me what that was in high school, I don't know if I would've taken it, but basic woodworking, I'm intrigued and I wanna learn. And then furniture and cabinet making will stay the same. Go to the next one. And then, construction has previously been ran as a year-long course for two periods a day. We're changing the name to Construction One from Building, Construction, Rough and Framing, and Finished Carpentry. And it's going to be run for one period a day for a full year, and that is the basic learning of construction. So, that's modular-based, basic electrical, basic plumbing, basic drywall, the skills you'd need to be a homeowner, you know, save you some money. And then, Construction Two, that's the projects for the community. These might be your sheds, or garages, or some other jobs for the community, and that will also be a one-period a day for a full-year course.
That leads us into engineering. If you look at the numbers there, obviously the wages look pretty good, okay? I'd love for more of our kids to be able, or be, get excited about engineering and take engineering courses. Right now, if you would please flip the slide, right now, we have Project Lead the Way for our curriculum. It's a canned curriculum that they provide. We pay a fee for that, which is, I feel, pretty significant, and we have to teach their curriculum because they have an end of course assessment, so we're kinda tied into teaching what they provide. What I'd like for us to do is to kinda get away from that and teach courses that are more broad. For example, our digital electronics course right now from Project Lead the Way is all digital electronics for a full year, okay? There's not a lot of kids we have that wanna do that for a full year at this level. So, what I'd like to do is take the Project Lead the Way courses and change the names, drop the Project Lead the Way, to offer a more broad picture of engineering, to get into some civil, mechanical, electrical, architectural engineering, so kids can see what those things are at the high school level, and then they can make an informed decision on what they wanna go into potentially following high school. So, I think it's important for us also to have an engaging curriculum. Our curriculum for Project Lead the Way, I taught it for, on and off for ten years or so. It started out awesome, it was hands-on, it was exciting, kids were wanting to be in those classes. I can speak coming from another district, Project Lead the Way numbers have dropped because the curriculum is not engaging for students at the high school level. So, I'd like to, for us to change that and be more open and more flexible on what we're teaching, talk to community businesses, things like that, to get input from them on what should we be teaching in engineering to better our students and make them more employable leaving our doors.
And I have quite a bit of experience with PLTW from the same perspective as this being presented. It started out as a great thing, but, you know, from a principal's perspective or teacher's perspective, it kinda got to be, okay, you're going to MSOE or nothing else. And there's a lot, there's a lot more than, there's nothing wrong with MSOE and those potentialities, but there's a lot more in this, in this track, which I fully support that direction, and it was a move that you can see in multiple districts. PLTW is very good, but it's very tracked.
Well, just a question, you know, students who are in the classes currently this year and then the changing of it, how are they gonna fit into this new change?
That is something I've thought about numerous times, because it is different grade levels in each class. And I, to be honest, I'm still being a clear picture of what that looks like in my head, but I can promise you that it won't, they will have courses they can take in the coming years that will not be overlap of what they have done in the past. If there are these small amounts of overlap where we do similar skills, but they're gonna be done in different activities, different ways.
And all the activities, no matter what, are going to be geared around, here's just some of our supporters, and these are supporters that have done stuff both financially and all of our areas, but are really on committees for us, and are, you know, we're going to them with, how do we move forward? What should we be teaching in engineering? What should be taught in metals in order for them to walk in and maybe do youth apprenticeship there, or go on to Stephen's point and then come back to this area, because we don't necessarily want everybody leaving here and not coming back, but to bring them back, or to walk in the day they turn eighteen and they have a job and they can be successful. So, the companies have really been trying to help us out and making sure that that curriculum meets the needs in a variety of ways. So, we'll definitely be able to, we're not gonna, we're not gonna roll this out and then like stop right there. Our department has always been very good with the three of us at keeping with the punches and keep rolling, and we just look forward to continuing to do that. So, whatever changes need to be made on a monthly or weekly basis, we're ready for that. Do you wanna go to the next slide? We have all of this detailed out in a massive document that gives you course descriptions, the rationale behind every single class on why there was a name change, why we're pulling out Project Lead the Way and switching gears, all the rationales in this document. So, if anytime you're going through here and you're like, I have a question, I don't know what this means, any one of us will do our best to answer it, if it's not in our area, or refer you to the correct person.
Okay.
You can go first.
So, I have several questions about this. So, my first one is you say that you get the data from Wisconsin, where do you specifically get this data from?
It was from the DPI webpage.
Okay, so, do you get any of it from Department of Workforce Development in Wisconomy?
No, we took it from the DPI webpage.
Okay, so, I encourage you to look at that, too, because looking at that will tell you exactly what the current job, the hot jobs are right now, and it's labeled as such. So, the number one hot job in Wisconsin and quite greatly across the nation is a CDL driver. That said, we can't really do that with our students, but are we even exploring options of having them in job shadow to see if that's an option for them? Because as we're finding out, not everybody's intended for college, but we can at least get, help them to figure out, is that something that could be a potential trajectory for them down the road? So, Wisconomy is a really good website. Now, the other thing I wanted to, if you can go back a few slides to the construction, no, further back where it has the data listed, one more, right there, okay? So, you're looking... So you're looking at all these and you're right, the construction, the occupation. So they no longer follow trades, it's occupations now per the department, I'm sorry, the Bureau of Apprenticeship. So you're looking at them, those are demanding woodworking. I struggle with woodworking because it's fun, but there's not, it's not a high demand job. So our woods department takes up a big physical footprint. Is there a way that we're looking at exploring options to keep woods, but take it to the next level to meet some of the manufacturing needs of some of the companies like you're saying? So are we writing for the Wisconsin Fast Forward grants for the, for the tech ed grants? Are we doing those types of things so that we can take it to the next level?
We are looking at those options as far as different grants around to help generate the means to do that. And we're going into businesses to see what they need. Construction-wise, we're opening Construction One up to freshmen right away to give them the opportunity to discover if they like that, they're interested in that.
So in terms of, go ahead.
The Fast Forward Grant, I have worked with SWMA, which is Central Wisconsin Metal Manufacturers. I sat down with them yesterday, actually, and we talked about the Fast Forward Grant. It was something that I went to apply for last year and was kind of pulled back within the high school because straight in it, it says you need a 200% match. The lowest amount if you get that grant is $5,000, which means the school district would obviously have to match at $10,000. A year ago, that was shut down within our building, so it never came forward. So this year, it came out. I looked at it and I said, okay. And the two of us, I'm like, okay, we gotta figure out how to fill this out. I was going on a brag going, how do I do this? And then I brought it back up to Nate and I said, okay, if we get this money, how do I guarantee that those funds are matched? Because it is a massive application and we are full-heartedly more filling it out because we have a lot of dreams and a lot of aspirations where we really want to take this, but we know that has a financial burden to it. And SWMA suggested that, one, we apply for it, and two, that Merrill, for example, had reached out to businesses through SWMA and they started to help with that 200% match. So this is something in progress, but it's like, literally like, it was a conversation yesterday. So we're not against it. With that being said, you know, there might come a time where we have to come back here and say, hey, this grant came through, but we need help financially to match that 200%.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Mr. Lehman and I green-lighted the match. So that we would do the match, so, you know.
Thank you.
That's good. So what, I don't know if you know, but I work for DWD, so that's a lot of what I do. This is a lot of my wheelhouse. And so when you go onto Wisconomy, and we, we get briefings on a routine and a quarterly basis of what Wisconsin economic outlook looks like. So if you look at central to northwestern Wisconsin, we're gonna be on a population decline over the next 10 years, but COVID fast-forwarded everything. So now you're having a lot of the boomers that are saying, I'm tapping out. I'm going out. I'm not gonna be a part of the workforce. The problem, as we all know, is students leave Wisconsin for their higher education and they don't want to come back. So we have to do what we need to do to try to retain for those that are not perhaps gonna go onto college. And as we all know, a lot of times you can make equivalent or higher wages than the college, the average college degree. So it is a, something to, just generally speaking, to keep Wisconsin moving forward, we need to stay on this track and help in that, in that fight here in Wisconsin. So I will get you guys a presentation that helps to lay out that big picture. And I can get that on a quarterly basis to you all. So just again, trying to keep looking differently, but the woodworking one, I, we gotta figure out how to do something different. I know the kids love it, but we need to take that to the next level to help meet manufacturers' needs because there's not a high demand, and those numbers tell you that right there.
I can speak from watching that program change from when Ron Klener and Danny Cladon were running it to now that Zach's in it. There is a CNC mill in there. That thing runs every single day. It's amazing because what the kids are doing is they're walking out of that room, they're going into the fab lab. They are designing within the software that industry would be using and then walking back into the wood shop and using a piece of equipment you would legit see in business. So that change has already happened and has continued to progress down to, you know, essentially running a base frame on the CNC mill. He's removed a lot of older equipment and made updates to help make it match what you're gonna see in industry. So the change is already happening there. And then by adding back in the construction that was really pulled away when COVID happened and then, you know, the Habitat House had to leave and the footprint that it took up, Zach embedded a lot of that into that intro woodworking and furniture and cabinet making class. So that way, when they walk into construction, they're able to understand, okay, this is, this is what went into this. So that way, this cabinet happens or this trim happens. So that change is already happening. And I know we would gladly welcome more thoughts on how to update that even more and progress it further.
Yes, and have we even thought about cooperating with other schools in terms of technology offerings? So we're not all having the same large physical footprint of all the equipment, but yet more, again, of the, of the co-op thought process? Yes, no?
Not on our end?
So on the engineering side of things, that's kind of in the works right now. Tim McNiff from Engineering Tomorrow, who used to be up at one of the Wassa schools, he has approached me through a DCR miss contact I have. But he is working with businesses, with Green Tech in particular, I think last week he visited with them, to actually build a facility for engineering where we can do that. And they provide all, that's part of the change in the curriculum, I'd like to go to some of their things. They offer free curriculum. They send you kits with everything in it for free. Businesses out east are sponsoring it basically. But they are looking at a building that businesses are kind of collaborating on to put in a bunch of engineering equipment that can be shared between school districts, like you're talking about. Biggest concern I have with that is just transporting kids and when do we take them out of, like, if we want to go for a half a day, can I take them out of other classes to do that? So that's a hurdle I see with that, but it's something that we're looking at in the engineering area and obviously could expand potentially in the future.
Matt?
Can you speak to what we're seeing in trends with interest from the kids? Like, are we seeing an incline in the number of each of your respective units or classes?
When we were revamping things, we looked back to 2007 and the numbers and the data and how things have changed. And with Project Lead the Way, we've watched the numbers where they go down because the way they've changed that curriculum and made it so dry, students are not interested in that. We're not a small school, but we're not a giant school either. So having that 15-student cap has also changed things as we get to the higher levels. So that's why we've asked, you know, most of our changes are within engineering because those numbers have dropped so much. And it's such, it's so narrow scoped that we're seeing a big drop-off after a freshman-level class. That shouldn't be happening. We should see kids that want to keep coming back. Woods, since we have brought Zach in, has skyrocketed in numbers just in a year that he's been with us. Those numbers doubled. Our intro classes are maxing out in the woods area. We've got students that are interested in construction again, so that's really exciting. The manufacturing area has gone back up, but we kind of have to squash it a little bit because, you know, we're not a big team anymore. There's three of us. So we had to kind of squash it down into what we were available to teach, but our number of females has gone up. And our number of students returning from year one to year two and three has gone up. Students in manufacturing, Mozzany manufacturing this year, which is the top-level class, I have three students that were in it last year. Because that curriculum changes enough every year that they wanted to come back. Two of those three students are youth apprenticeship students, ones that shooting metals. Like, they're, they're working in it, they're living in it. So with some of the changes we've made just within our own curriculum and how we engage those students has really spoken to what we're trying to do. And we've been watching those numbers steadily incline. And I foresee that happening with engineering too after we go through and make the changes. So it's not so dry.
I, I appreciate the fact that each of you in your respective areas, to some degree, have to be a change agent. And we need to meet the students for what the needs are, and I think you recognize that. And your interest level is to keep them engaged in that, those type of classes. So I just want to thank you for the work you guys have been putting in.
So something I think I would just add in general. If other people have something they want to add, whether it comes through curriculum or finance or whatever of the committees, you know, when we're looking at try to grow certain departments or grow certain areas of curriculum, I think of ways to prospectively reach down into the middle schools. And the way mine, mine thinks is, you know, the last, the last four or six weeks before the kids have to choose their freshman curriculum, you know, you know, do the kids who are interested or maybe all the kids forced to go spend a day and shadow in certain types of classes? Maybe across all of the curriculum areas? Because these are ways that we're gonna broaden out the interest, whether it's in curriculum areas that are already growing or flattening or even others that maybe aren't being heard tonight, right? In the other elective areas. So I, I appreciate the questions and I think Jessica's right as far as having you guys just have familiarity with some of those other sources. We understand the whole DPI aspect, right? I mean, we're school people, right? Or you guys are school people anyway. And we know DPI, but there are these other areas as well that have non-school but pertinent data. And I think that's very relevant. I mean, we could be talking Department of Labor. We could talk about Bureau of Labor Statistics. We could just keep expanding that. The other thing that I was just gonna add is that, you know, Mr. Munoz brought up MSOE, for example. There are certainly going to be kids who maybe want to get engineering degrees perhaps, who don't want to necessarily get the, what we call the well-rounded educations of a traditional four-year institution. But if they go to certain schools, maybe they're not into English or foreign language or social studies, for example. But they love math and the sciences and the engineering-type classes. So then they go out and they get a Bachelor of Engineering degree rather than a Bachelor of Science in Engineering. Same thing in the musics, right, in the music programs. There's a Bachelor of Arts in Music or a Bachelor of Music. Both of my daughters went to four years of the four-year university without ever taking a single math, science, or English class or social studies. Not a single class in four years. And I thought, I've never heard of such a thing. But again, to what Matt said, meeting the kids where they are and what their interests are, right? So the parents have a vested interest, the taxpayers have an interest. We want to support whatever curriculum areas make the most sense for our community. And just know there are a lot of resources here for you guys to tap into as well. I love seeing the list of the local businesses. There are two or three that aren't in Mozzany but are in Wassa that maybe, you know, send you an email on that, right, that I'm aware of. So anybody else have a comment they want to add?
I guess I'm an engineer and I'd like to, you know, learn more and how I could, maybe you talked about there's like committees and whatever I can do to help, as long as there's.
Yeah, I mean, definitely be open to that. I'm open for anything, but we can get to make it better for our kids, so.
Thank you for your presentation.
If they want to learn about dams, they can come, put them on a bus.
You want to make a dam?
Sam dams.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Great job. Thank you very much.
Are you gonna give them the same thing, like they're busy and have a lot of work to do and know that their work is done?
They're welcome to leave, absolutely. Their presentation is done. They're probably gonna be so enamored with the work we've already done that they want to stay. No, no, no pressure. I'm serious. Item number 10, discussion impossible decision, approval of the monthly. Hang on a second. Do we have to vote on those two items that we pulled out? I think the one was just a presentation. That was just discussion, so.
I think we voted on the flag.
Yeah, we did vote on that and we voted for the broader consent agenda, didn't we? Yeah, we voted before we came and did those items. Item number 10, discussion impossible decision, approval of the monthly voucher list.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Hanson. Second by Maple. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Barnes? Gorman?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hermany?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Stachowski?
Yes.
Zbro?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Item 11, discussion impossible decision, acceptance of the monthly treasurer's report.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Hanson.
I'll second.
Second by Gorman. Questions? Roll call, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hermany?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Stachowski?
Yes.
Zbro?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Item 12, discussion, school board superintendent communications.
Yeah, I have four items in there. One is the Mozzany Link article seems to be well-received. I've gotten some good feedback. Talked about lowering taxes, top ACT scores. Congratulations to the high school for that. They had quite a ceremony with T-shirts and there's some signage up around the high school. Great fall sports season, I talked about a little bit. Some definitely one of those successes also brought up in the student report. Then we talked about some mental health and social emotional needs as we came to move into the waning days of the pandemic, hopefully. The second point I talked about is addition of mental health leadership teams, some really good strides in that particular strategic plan pillar, especially in regards to data thresholds. We'll be piloting data thresholds and looking at interventions and how to better really get at making sure that we're serving all of our students and in terms of gaps and interventions. So I'm very excited about that. Also, school forests, I have a little piece in there. Just happened that I was at school forest several different times between the last board meeting and now once with Mr. Way, who is in the audience. We had a good walk-around, I think it was with the third grade?
I think it was younger.
Oh, it was a kindergarten?
I think it was kindergarten, yes.
Yeah, sorry. So we were, we were walking around, I was out there on a couple of different nights and Mr. Way definitely has some expertise with respect to these sorts of things in terms of the school forests. He was very excited about it, as was I. And we'll be, you know, pushing in that regard with curriculum as we move forward. So I think we have a great facility out there that the board has put some dollars into. It's, it's a great location. The proximity to our facilities is, is not that far. And, and I can just speak from my previous district that it was so far to the school forests from, from our district buildings that it was prohibitive to having anything done. Ours is relatively close, you know, for those that know, town of Mozzany, you know, up K.K. So we're excited about that. The CDC I mentioned, in here has approved vaccines for five years and older. I did send a message that, to, already to all parents about how they could access that. You know, in terms of information, if they choose to do that on their own, where they can go, how they can click and do all that. So we continue to have a very good working relationship with the Marathon County Health Department as recently as today. The numbers that are listed there, which was posted before the weekend, is, is now a little bit different. It is one and a half percent to two and a half percent, so that's a little bit off. As I mentioned to the board in some email communications, that there has been a spike at the elementary school that we are aware of, unfortunately, and a little bit so in the, the middle school. Not a lot of activity with respect to COVID at the high school, very low numbers in, in that environment. So initially, this was similar to last year, but one thing that has changed since I did post this, it does seem to be holding on longer than the spike that occurred last year. Last year, the spike in our, in our COVID-19 data occurred in October and started to. Last year, the spike in our in our COVID-19 data occurred in October and started to wane in, in other words, started to decrease into the Thanksgiving break. And this seems to be holding on a little bit for whatever reason.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. In curriculum, we talked about tooting our own horns as a district and how individually tooting your own horn is immodest. When you're representing an organization, you want to get that word out. And this whole idea of ACT, top performing school, it's great that it happened in the school. The community needs to hear that constantly. I know it was in the link. I know that. You know, I envisioned yard signs up and down the highway, you know? That's that's my idea of how we get that word out into the community. Because when people are driving around the region, when they're looking to relocate here, they see that, they're like, oh, I should look at the Mozeney School District for my kids. So just a thought.
On that point, and I didn't put it in my this particular communication because it went public before it was publicly released, but I believe it was today it's publicly released, right, Mr. Way?
That is correct. As of today, it is publicly released.
All right, so the school report card information is now public. So I didn't put it in here because it wasn't public when this went went active. But the district does exceed expectations on the most recent state report card. So we exceed expectations in all buildings or meets, I think high school meets exceeds in in the elementary and the middle school. So I've written some about this. There'll be more that comes out about that in the next link about exceeding expectations as a school district, that we have done good work, but we do have targets. We have looked at how to make that even better as we roll in forward with our school improvement plans, which the board has already approved.
Thank you. Item number 13, 13A is discussion impossible decision, Mozeney Middle School suggested additions and alterations.
Yes, most of the information in this highlight here is identical to the information that was already brought to the board for discussion only. So the first three links are identical to the information that we brought to the board. Essentially, what we wanted to do was update possible funding, which is the file length that's listed there in terms of how to get through this. And I know that Michelle Brown is here as well with some additional information, which we'll step into in just a second here. But on this particular link, this talks through the funding sources. The vast majority of this money, we have already, through the board's work over multiple years, is in our capital improvement fund, Fund 46. The S R two and S R three funds, those funds will be available to 2023, one of them in 2024 for the other, correct, Michelle? Yeah, so 2023, it was September 30th of 2023 for, I believe, S R two and then September 30th of 2024 for S R three. So that's the availability deadline of those particular funds. And part of even the next step with the continuity of services plan for COVID-19 is actually linked to that. So that's a continuing thing that is linked to accessing those funds. As a reminder to the board and the community, the S R funds are federal COVID relief dollars that are released federally and then the state holds those dollars until we walk through the steps that the state asks us to walk to to access the money, okay? It's our recommendation to use certain funds that are listed there from the federal dollars to improve the airflow and the air quality in the space at the elementary school or the middle school cafeteria commons. Currently is the smallest facility with the largest number of students and the largest number of staff in one building. So it's under 2,900 square feet and it's almost twice the size in the elementary school for about for the for less students. So and obviously, the high school has a larger facility as well. So by increasing and using federal dollars to increase or improve airflow and air quality in the facility space in and of itself, one of the big benefits, aside from those very important benefits, would be decreasing the number of lunches. So getting, there's so many lunches, the lunch starts very early and tends to go very late because there's not enough room in a building that large in that small of a space. Additional dollars, we have a million dollars' worth of loan authority, which I am recommending that we do at around 2%, depending on how we choose to do it. And all with with the connection of all these dollars, it's 4.46 million in availability. It's not my recommendation that we need a referendum to move forward with this, but that the board's work over multiple years puts us in a very positive situation to be able to make some important improvements to the middle school, which is our oldest building with the highest level of needs. Other things that would be completed in this construction remodel is asbestos abatement and pulling out all the old pipes that are no longer, they need to be PVC and that are currently ceramic and all those sorts of things. But also vastly improving our special needs areas for some of our, you know, some of our highest need students, making those areas state-of-the-art. Also improving some of our music areas that would be made larger so they can have, you know, practice all in one space instead of going to larger spaces. Other benefits would be moving eighth grade team from what we call the tower, which is the highest level, and bringing them down to the first floor so they can be with the rest of the team on the main floor. One of the other aspects is rebuilding people's services right next to that special needs area so that our counselors and social worker are right in the core of the building, okay? So that is the plan. We do have the architect present as well, Mr. Jamrose. Mr. Jamrose, just a reminder to the board, for those board members that weren't on the board, when the Science Science Wing project was commissioned, Mr. Jamrose was the architect who was directly involved in working with the district on that very successful project as well.
Okay, questions?
Would you want Michelle to present that other document with additional information? I'm sorry for interrupting.
That's in the blackboard.
Would you prefer, from the board's perspective, would you prefer to have a conversation more broadly about the project and its merits or its your desire to proceed or alter? Would you rather have a financial conversation before that part?
Making a decision that it's a worthwhile project before we figure out how to pay for it makes sense.
So why don't we, okay. So I I'm wondering if it would be possible for you or perhaps Steve, either Steve. If I understand correctly, if we decide to proceed, we're going to eventually have to decide whether we want to have an architect-driven or led project or a general contractor-driven or led project. Is that correct? If I understand that correctly?
There's certain ways you can deliver that project. In the past, you really had all three methods. When we did the first referendum, three or four years ago now already, Samuel's group was hired as a part of that project. They were a general contractor-led referendum project and that did not, was not successful, so it did not go ahead. The next phase went into Nexus, which you hired as a engineering firm slash contractor firm where they had all of the design services underneath their umbrella and the project was done for a stipulated fee. And the last project we were involved with was the Science Wing, where we had budgeted, I want to say about two point or a little over three million around that amount. And it was bid out and a number of general contractors bid on it, giving us a savings of a couple hundred thousand dollars in that process. I've been through them all. I worked for a design build contractor in Appleton before starting my own firm and also coming from Mozeney as a graduate. So I appreciate to be an architect in COVID, almost 40 years ago. But I did tell Dave and Steve that I've seen engineering, I've seen the design build side, and I really think, especially for the town that I grew up in, you can give your business value from just an architect bid process because all the general contractors are bidding that out and they're giving you the best numbers.
Thank you for the clarity. That's something I wanted to know. You maybe all knew that, I don't know.
I would support that architect-led project.
So that's, okay, that's probably ahead of the game, but thank you for the clarity because that helps the rest of us know what we might be thinking about, so. Questions?
I feel that the last meeting, we kind of covered the the purpose and need for the project and supportive of it. I think for me, this document here that Michelle, probably a team effort put together today, and I'd like to thank you for that. I really have maybe just one or two questions left on it. The S R two funds are, in essence, need to be spent by September 30th, 2023. Looks like to me substantial completion is sometime around August 2023. What is S R, what are the S R two funds have to be used for? What I want to make sure is that we don't risk that $570,000 because we only given ourselves a month here. There is a there's a chance, I mean, the project could go long, but maybe the S R two covers some of the earlier stuff in the project. No, no concerns.
In a conversation with Michelle, that would be the intent. If we greenlight that project, use the federal dollars first.
Okay.
Is to to look at the federal dollar expenditures first and to make sure that we're not even close to that to that potentiality. There's a possibility in all builds that it could be done earlier. I think this document, it is a team document between Steve and Michelle that they were working on today, so thank you both for that. You know, that that would be our intent. Thank you.
The S R three funds, is that the the 20% of the presentation we got last month that has to be used to address the impact of lost instructional time? The 869 would be the remaining of that. That 20% has already been taken off.
Right, we're holding back the 20%. Mr. Way and and Steph and Rob are working on what we're going to be doing with the 20% actively. So that'll be coming through staffing likely.
Make sure it wasn't 20% off of 869.
Yep, we've accounted for that.
Michelle, is there anything you would like to present or assist us with knowing about?
Maybe some additional information on if we, the board chose to, excuse me, if the board chose to go with a $1 million borrowing. We do have free authority to borrow up to a million dollars without putting that out to the taxpayers for approval. And that could be, I put estimates from Baird on what repayment would look like. We could do five-year notes or 10-year notes for that. And the payments would be on a five-year note, 212, the highest would be 212,073 a year for five years to pay that off. Or on the 10-year, it'd be 111,522 would be the lowest payment, yes.
Can you talk about our authority? I guess we can borrow up to a million dollars. Can we borrow up to a million again or is there...
Yes, you could, as soon as your principal pays down, whatever you're, you know, if you owe 900,000, you could borrow it off another 100,000.
So my line of, our line of credit is a million dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And then...
Without a referendum.
Right, but my point being is I suspect some of our ability to borrow a million dollars is for, we don't know what we don't know that we're going to have to buy and pay for. And if we borrow the million to do this, we don't have the ability to borrow another million dollars.
Until we pay a million dollars.
Until you pay it down.
My only point is, we're using up our borrowing ability on this project and that borrowing ability is gone until we pay it down.
Yeah, also keep in mind that we're sitting 31% fund balance.
More.
And the the board's policy is between 25 and 30% fund balance. So we have some dollars that we've not committed, we've not gone all in, if you will, with the dollars that the that we have available in fund balance.
Maybe that answers my question of what if the total project ends up being 4.6 million? Now we have 140,000, we need to figure out fund balance, is that where it would come from?
And I'm also, you know, this is a multi-year project, so my goal is to budget at least 250,000 to go into Fund 46 each year. So, you know, I'm looking at that.
What's the balance of Fund 46 as we sit now?
Well, at the end of this fiscal year, which we could make the transfer anytime, it'd be 2 million, 21,000.
Oh, plus we can put it in 2022 and 2023.
Right, so that's actually our fund balance currently.
And we'll know the bids in April, so, okay.
And then another thing on the federal funds, too. I'm in the process of applying for those. I've already started that, you know, just trying to make sure we have all the documents that are needed. So once that's approved, we know we're good with that. These amounts have been allocated to Mozeney School District, so we don't have to wait, you know, to see if these are the accurate amounts. They are. This is the amount we're going to receive. And if for some reason, construction project wasn't approved, we could use it in other ways. So let's say our timing, you know, things did get pushed back, we could use these funds just by changing our budget with the DPI for that and use them in another way and then have the money what we would have, what we did spend them on for something else for this project. So it is flexible.
So the the dollars, the federal dollars have been, those are the exact amounts that have been allotted to Mozeney. It's just a matter of what the state is going to approve it for.
Okay. That was my last question, would you feel confident that the scope of this project is going to meet every dollar that is earmarked for us?
We believe so.
Yes.
1.3 million dollars that we would be offered.
Right. I mean, the air quality aspects of it alone, the asbestos pieces of it, the elimination of ceramic going to PVC, a lot of the different pieces in a building that that is that old. I I believe it fits exactly what those sorts of relief dollars were meant for. They talked specifically about air quality and increased space. So when Steve and I, Mr. Kaiser and I did a, sorry about that, Mr. Jamrose, I was looking at you, but I was talking to Steve Kaiser. The, when we were looking at this and did an initial, you know, walk around, the biggest area of need with respect to airflow and space, it it is clearly the middle school. It's clearly the middle school and it's clearly, if you look at their cafeteria commons arrangement, it it really was never intended for the number of students that flow through there. For those that have the history on the board, there used to be a door that where the where the the microwaves are right now, there used to be a door that went downstairs into the middle school gym that allowed for this open flow between the the existing cafeteria and the gym. So there was this, years, you know, five, seven years ago, there was this active understanding that that middle school gym was also kind of a cafeteria because they knew it was too small. So that kind of changed, they put the wall up and redid the the middle school gym floor, put quite a bit of dollars into that space. We have dedicated gymnastics there and growing numbers in gymnastics and our gyms are heavily used, so it's just not not a doable scenario that way. Mr. Kaiser?
I have one thing to add, too. You know, just when you walk through the building and look at the area that we're encompassing for remodeling, you know, you have to always look at your end-of-life cycle that of what we've built. And, you know, that kitchen is 1969, all that plumbing is what it is. So, I mean, eventually, that that's a target that we'd have to jump into some fashion. So, I mean, it basically ran a life cycle, if you ask my opinion, to that. So, you know, to put good dollars back in that space is not going to solve the problem. That's why I told David, he asked me to draw a circle, I'm going to throw a dot there because, you know, I just had those issues that I'm going to deal with, we are dealing with. We have broken pipes in the wall, plumbing comes from the floor. It's just a little bit of an issue that is fine, a little by the little. So I I think this is a nice opportunity to fix some of that, put monies to good areas. We need some other issues, too.
An additional benefit is when we did have that discussion, you threw... An additional benefit is when we did have that discussion, you drew the dot and said, what are we going to do with, I have to refit all of this. You know, why would I do this in a space that already needs a full reno? So then we started to talk about the special needs area right across the hall and how we could make that like 21st century best environment possible for some of our highest need kids. Then it got to be a dual conversation. And then it just started to work itself to counselors and moving the counselors closer to the main office, more in the general flow of the student population and our people services staff. Because they're kind of up that level away from the main floor. So it was, it was an interesting look at this and it's, you know what?
Have a question about this document?
Yes.
So our 10-year construction needs projection?
Yep.
Because this isn't really my area of expertise. I'm just curious. So there was a discussion there, when I look at the middle school, Steve, do you have that there?
Yes, I do.
So the 6,900 square feet for the cafeteria commons, kitchen halls, special needs areas. It's got all these different square footage areas. And then the discussion we're having tonight is for a 9,432 square foot space for addition. And then exterior improvements about 8,700 square feet. Is, of this proposal we're discussing tonight, what of this does it potentially lap off of this broader list?
I can answer that for you. And I think it's important to understand through the data of this document to double point.
I get it. Yes, sir.
Because, you know, when we put this together, you know, this discussion did not happen.
I completely agree.
I guess to take us down the railroad track a little bit farther, if I just look at the middle school and the current listing you have in your hand. You know, the first line, if I was going to throw off five dots, obviously your cafeteria commons area is rectified with this change. Your kitchen as well, which if you add those two together, gets you over 10,000. It's just very close to the design that we came up with. Your special needs area, remodeling, relocation, that part of this project, the student services Dave just discussed. It's our counselors out of the 1922 section down to the first floor. And then remodeling existing classrooms. And those three classrooms, actually there's five in total on the plan. There are the choir room, the two have become a choir room and the three are existing classrooms, which were existing classrooms before special needs occupied them. So we'd like to retro, retro that back into existing classrooms again. So I would tell you, basically, we have the first, second, the halls is another matter. But your special needs student service remodel, it'd be five dots on that list, Kevin.
So it's the first, the second, the fourth?
Fifth and sixth.
Okay. And then the asbestos and the VCT?
Yeah, you know, that's, um, we have, we have asbestos everywhere in that building, so.
It's got to be partial.
Understand, I'm only going to touch what I have to touch right now. Because once I demo that, I, I'm tied to it. That's just the thing that I cannot get away from.
We're going to, we have an asbestos abatement planned in all of our buildings.
Yes.
And we'll be opportunistic with asbestos, meaning this. That when we put the new elevator in and the board approved the elevator at the middle school, there was asbestos abatement that occurred when that quarter million dollar elevator went in. And we were opportunistic that way. All the brand new bathrooms at the high school, when we did that three quarters of a million dollar project my first year, we were opportunistic with all of the asbestos in each of those zones. So they're not just brand new bathrooms, but we've gotten out all that asbestos as well. So, so yes, we'll, we'll be taking out asbestos that is in the zones that's approved, but not all of it. Because it's currently not dangerous or not friable at this time. And we're aware of where it's at and we have a plan for removing it all eventually.
So why would I use the asbestos on there, Kevin? And even the classroom remodel, because even you look upstairs, we're working that 1969. There's remodel that would happen in those classrooms too. It's an ever-evolving thing, I guess. I would just always have that back on my mind.
Sure. But even if we just look at the first, second and fourth items, sorry, that adds up to like 3.6, 3.7 million. And that was 2020. If we're now looking at 2022, this last column references a 3.2% annual increase, which would put the number for 2022 up at 3.93 million. And the presumption was that that 3.9 million, if we would have been in a position to do it in 2022, would have all been on the local taxpayers. And this plan involves 1.43 million in federal funds that we were not at all planning for or expecting to receive. I mean, there's no free dollars. We know that. But it's spread across everybody else, not just local taxpayers. So that's what I, I, I just wanted to know what it all covered.
Yes, sir.
And it also, of course, takes care of some of the other areas, which makes it even more of a financial win, I think, for our local community.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear about the asbestos abatement. That we'll get, we'll be opportunistic with the areas that we're hitting and get the asbestos there. But by no means would eliminate all the asbestos at the middle school. That is a much bigger task.
You can never make that statement on an existing building of asbestos, no matter what you do. You can never label those buildings asbestos-free. That is a missed little work. That's against the law.
And I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yep. But we handle that internally. We, we absorb those costs.
The only other thing that I would mention is that most of you at this ta, at these tables realize that I don't like the idea of continuing to invest in the three buildings that we presently have. I would just assume that we found a complex, a geographic space where we could build an entire educational and athletic, uh, complex. Thank you. So if we go this route, we are, we're not going to invest $4 million plus and then not stay there for a long time. So I'm not suggesting that because of my personal feeling in that, that I'm going to oppose this, I'm not. It's just not, it just doesn't make my heart sing when I think about it. That's all.
I think in previous boards prior to your coming on board this second time, we had that conversation because this 4 million is chump change compared to the 16, 17 million that we spent on all the upgrades through the latest project and the additional science wing.
Sure.
The board like had that conversation, if we do this, a previous board, we're making a commitment to staying here.
Sure. Fair enough. Thank you.
And I've had a discussion with Mr. Kaiser about just this topic, about the land that we own right here. We own 72 acres right on this, off of this facility. So Mr. Kaiser and I have had that discussion since I onboarded almost three years ago. And he and I are of the same opinion that, that I, I believe that that time has, has passed just based on the amount of dollars that have been committed within the last five to seven years in the existing facilities.
I would actually one thing to that too, though, in regards to, I think a great opportunity when we purchase the homes, you know, next to the middle school playground, that really opened up a lot of avenues for us. We would really, our site is tight, no matter what we do. And everything we do, we better think long and hard about what we start sticking shovels in the ground because we have to know how it's going to play off traffic flow and all that. But the old cliche is you can't make dirt. So I, I just want to say, it was a great move for the board to buy those homes and, and get some security of that site. It does get traffic issues we had in the past with the alley. It was a lot of mess in there and a lot of liability to you if you want to get right down to it. There's a lot of risk when you start bringing vehicles through playgrounds and all those things that happen. So I just say, I think you mitigated that risk nicely. It also gained you to have an option to make this call if you choose to do so. Otherwise, it'd be extreme of that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Anybody interested in making a motion to approve the project design? And we should probably have a separate resolution as it relates to the financing arm? Or do you think it can be in one? Amy, what are your thoughts?
The financing is in December.
Oh, and, okay.
So if, if the board approves the project as a whole, then we'll go to Baird and work with, I think, Grim Law Firm.
Thank you.
And bring that back in December.
I would like to make a motion to approve the architect-led project for the middle school improvements to begin design and bidding phases effective immediately.
One second.
We have a motion by Hanson and a second by Baumann. Any other discussion? As part of this process, are we making the commitment to a particular company?
Do we have to?
I wouldn't think we would have to tonight until after we finalize the payment mechanism, but you said.
The architectural company, I think we need to make that commitment tonight.
Okay.
And I, I'm sorry, I don't, I forget the name of.
Blue Design Group.
So if I could amend my motion to include it, it's Blue Design Group.
This is why I was asking.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I didn't know what, so I didn't.
Yeah, no, that's all right.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Please. This is a big deal, so yes.
So we work with Mr. Jamrose, like, what, if his group's in there and I have a vote, like, I want to use this group. I just want to make sure that we're within our own board policy on how we're sole sourcing a significant chunk of money to one group right now in one vote. I just haven't looked to make sure that. I would like to make sure.
I think from my background, I think for professional services we can, but I, I'm not a lawyer and I don't pretend to be. But I, I think for professional services, we do have that function there.
Mr. Kaiser?
I grew up, I believe we did make that motion, we did the science thing. So when we hired Blue Design Group to do that facility, that was when the board voted no.
Thank you. Is that history?
I'm cool with that. Just one last question.
I don't have any indication that it's.
So still moving forward with this pro, this portion of the process is not committing us to completely going forward. And what I mean by that is just when you think about the potential supply issues that we may run into and the logistics of if this goes into school year timeframes, we're going to have to figure out ways to work around the, the logistics of, of school, of the educational process. So correct me if I'm wrong, we're not truly fully committing to this. Just the, the architectural bidding and all of that at this point, correct? Because then when we go out to bid, we're going to have to find out, do we truly, do these companies truly have the supplies? Or can they get them for us to keep meeting our timelines for educational needs?
When I said April, bidding in April, I think that was kind of my intent, that we get it to the bidding phase. And then if this project comes in at $6 million, we, we need to talk. But we can't get started. I mean, we can't.
They won't know until they get the process. I was telling Steve, in some of our school projects we're working on right now, there's a project that we just bid out for Greenville Middle School in Oregon Middle School District. And when the bids came in, Byron said, you're going to get shot drawings and we need to turn around on our shot drawings within 20 days. Because that will lock in the price sometimes because it's subject, they won't go that much for a certain period of time. Plus, like you said, there's the delivery. How long is it going to take to get our rooftop built? How long is it going to take? And we won't know that until probably a little bit after bidding, when they qualify those bids or whoever you select. And that contractor comes to us or to the board and says, I need approval on all these things within 15 days and here's the targeted delivery date. So I agree, you're committing to just the process to get you there. And then at that point, you can review your bids and decide, if we can't move forward because it's going to take two years, we won't get our S R funding in that time because it'll be beyond S R funding for, you know, what I have. But we have to see, you know, some of that S R funding you could say is going to pay for the construction before 2024. And then the other funds you have can pay for expenses before. So there's different means you can figure it out.
Is there any way to begin the bidding earlier than April?
We're trying to get it done earlier, but it's a process. Right now, a lot of engineers are tied up. It's been the busiest year we've seen in our firm's 17-year history. And a lot of our consultants are completely swamped with stuff they have as well. And what's made them busier?
Yeah.
What's made them busier is that they'll design it one way, they'll get the number back from the contractor and they'll have to redesign a new structural system with precast instead of steel choice because that's more available. And it's this back and forth process that's really played havoc with a lot of consultants. This is already aggressive for months.
Yeah, I do believe it's important the board make some sort of decision tonight so that we can give, if it's the board's decision to work with Blue Design Group, give them time to start hitting the specifics of this so that we can see where we're at in early spring.
Right. And to see what's available. And to Justice's point, we are not locked in as far as if they come back with a quote or whatever over the four or over what we can afford. And that's, I think that's fair enough. I'm, I'm good with that.
Nobody really knows at this point because the numbers we've gotten on referendums that have been passed are coming back higher than expected just because nobody knows.
Everybody is having that problem and everything, so it's weird in the world right now.
Peter, I have a question. Why are you recommending an architectural-driven than an engineering consultancy one or a G C one?
Architectural knows this business better than the engineering side of it. This wouldn't be my cup of tea. I, I would recommend architectural based on that. And then versus a, a general contractor, I, I'm a big believer in the relationship that we have. Like mentioned, the relationship that we have with Mr. Jamrose. I think there's a level of trust there, commitment to the, the, the community understands what we need, what we need. I think there's a, I think there's cost benefits to that and him being in control of the project. I'm big on the relationship side of it and I feel that's of utmost importance, especially in this kind of a timeline that we're under. We need an advocate.
Thank you. Anybody else? Are you hearing none?
Should we have the motion read again, just for clarity?
I was going to ask Amy if she felt I gave a good enough.
You approved the architect-led project for the middle school improvement and to begin design and bidding phases. And then you amended it to include the new design group.
Are you good?
Do we need a dollar amount or?
With the total project to not exceed 4.46 million? Do we need that in there? It seems like we, I mean, this is what we're talking about right now. I mean, we know what we have in our capital improvement trust fund. We know what we can borrow and we know what the S R funds are.
One more that come also next month.
Are we even committing to that? I'm wondering if we just need to, a dollar amount for just in the designing and bidding phase.
Okay, all right. Which we're not going to have by next meeting. We're not going to have that by next meeting.
No, but am I understanding you correctly? We're hiring Blue Design Group to do work for us. We need to authorize.
I hear that.
The amount of money we need to get to the next phase, not necessarily the whole project or?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I guess I'm just, there's been a lot of discussion that we're not committing to the entire project. So we're only committing to get up to, get bids. And then we make decisions from there, so.
Well, that having been said, it would seem to me that we're not asking to commit to, I don't remember, forgive me for the, is it? 6%, 4%? What is the?
Five, five percent.
5%.
5.35.
5.35. So with all due respect, I mean, Steve is here, so it's a little awkward, but are you, are we committing to the roughly $250,000 all tonight?
I was going to say 250. If I need to put in a number in my motion, I was going to say 250,000.
Okay.
If we feel that's important.
I don't. I just was wondering what's, what we're committing to, that's all.
I think we commit to moving forward.
Peter, this is your area.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm just thinking of all kinds of ideas. I.
You can't do enough billing in one month to come to 250.
Right.
Not one month, but you could try.
It comes fast.
It does. It adds up very fast.
I would, I would include in the, the motion because, like he even brought up, where we're at, there may need to be changes as contractors bring up things that could be of benefit to us and overall cost savings in the long run.
Sure.
Of a cost not to exceed $300,000 as part of my motion.
Okay. Steve, did you want to add something, Steve? You were looking.
No, I just want to make sure you're clear what you're doing. No, I just want to make sure you're clear what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I'm just concerned because you are committing to design services.
Right.
And that's all you're committing to until bid day, because the board always has a right to accept or reject all bids. But this work has to be done and paid in full because those services are gonna be what the contractors are gonna bid off of. So you're approving the 300,000. That's what you're really paying for and that bill you're going to get.
Yeah.
Period.
Gotcha.
I think that was helpful. I know it was for me. This is in my area, so.
You should be clear so we know.
No, no. You got that, Matt?
Indeed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second as amended twice. And any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hanson.
Yes.
Hermany.
Yes.
Maple.
Yes.
Stankowski.
Yes.
Ziegler.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Baumann.
Yes.
Gorman.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you for your work. You know, it's an important step. It's a big commitment. And so that's, I think, the reason for a lot of questions and clarity.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to work in a hometown, a place that I'm most passionate about as well. If there's anything I can do for my town, I'm gonna give you the best, I'm gonna give you the best direction I possibly can.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13B. By the way, you also are excused. You have a drive. So, item 13B, discussion impossible decision, review of the safe return to in-person and continuity of services plan.
Yeah, this is a document that's required by the state to be reviewed. So it's upper standard review rule. So essentially, you'll see at the bottom, this list CISA 5 at the bottom of this plan. So this is a model template that's provided by the DPI via CISA 5. So essentially, what I went through and did with the assistance of several staff, some in the room and some not, including our school nurses, special education staff was involved and others, was go through and document what, what we are doing and what we have done to this point. And then, you know, if you jump to the very end of it, the very last page, there's an overview. And the very last page, there's a, it says periodic review and overview. And I think this part is, is, is an important piece. It's all important. But this talks about what we have been through with respect to COVID-19. So it talks about the initial plan, which was approved by the board in August 18th, 2020. And that the updated, it was updated monthly. We did have it on the agenda through the May 2021 meeting with the exception of March 2021, when COVID was handled through the school board personnel committee. And in April of 2021, when it was the only time it wasn't on the school board agenda or committee agendas. That's an important point for the state of Wisconsin to recognize in this official document. The Mozzany School District reviewed the plan again in November of 2021, which is right now. So we are going through some procedural steps, including an opportunity for public comment, which we already had in this particular meeting, with a planned further review in May of 2022. So you will see the same document. We've already got it targeted for the May 2022 school board meeting, where we'll update it, change it and make adjustments based on the situation on the ground or anything else. But what is written in here is reflective of our current operations. We'll determine in May of 2022 if and when there are further reviews needed according to the laws and plays at that time. There is a further six-month review from the May of 2022 date. I think it's October, if I remember correctly, October of 2022, ballpark, give or take a month. So that is on the books. So the reason I target May of 2022 is that now that vaccines, including for all students, are available, I'm wondering how long this will exist. We're not sure. But we know for sure about the May of 2022 set date, which is why it's listed in there. The only addition that I would recommend be added would be a document that, that all the board has in front of you. It's a recommended addition to return to in-person document. It's in your black folders on the left side, I believe. So it's in your black folders on the left side and it's on letterhead. So it's just that brief little statement on letterhead, but I'll give you a couple of seconds to read. In, in that particular addition, just in talking with the nurses, that a student or staff member, if unvaccinated, will be required to quarantine at home if a family member, including but not limited to a sibling, is in isolation for a confirmed COVID-19 positive test. The student or staff member, if unvaccinated, may return after the family member is out of isolation and has no onset of the illness symptoms. So this is not currently in our safe return to in-person instruction continuity of services plan, but I recommend adding it in and do recommend approval of the entire plan to the board.
I've got a question. On page two, in the bulleted box, the very bottom one says, provide notification to families, parents, blah, blah, blah. What type of notification is that? Is that a letter? Is that a phone call? Is that an email?
Yeah, email.
Because I heard some people were getting letters and then if it's a letter-
Well, some letters are coming from the Marathon County Department. So we do send email notifications.
Okay. I didn't know if that should be clarified or not, or what?
We can make a change.
I mean, it's up to you, but it's just something that-
But we send emails. We don't send paper letters. The district.
So the school sends emails and I do it?
Right, and then the addresses and names are sent to the health department, but that's all. No email addresses and no phone numbers, right? The school is not providing email addresses and phone numbers of the families, only addresses and names, right, to the health department?
We are correct of COVID-positive.
Just the addresses and names, okay.
Well, I don't know, but I thought it was, I thought that's what it was.
I believe that's correct.
Or are those only of the, those who are, who are contact traced?
That's COVID positives. So COVID-positive communication, we, we work back and forth with the health department to make sure that they're confirming the COVID positives. And that's why there's a little bit of a lag that the dashboard is updated.
Yeah.
Only when we confirm, or the health department confirms the COVID positive. We, we might be aware of some information and there's email notifications going out to, to parents and to staff. And we're waiting for that final notification from the health department based on that.
Okay, page four.
That's why there's the lag in time.
Page four, in the middle there.
Yeah.
In that middle box.
Yeah.
End of first paragraph. Where it says we have returned to normal cleaning during the 21, 22 school year with an understanding that we use ionized spraying as needed basis. I would think we are doing that now in the elementary based on what's going on in the elementary school?
Right, I mean-
So we need to-
If not, we should be?
Yes, that's what I heard. So we need to, I'm sorry, sanitize.
Turn that over to Steve. Mr. Kaiser?
Yeah, we had, we had this spray result, you know, whenever possible. We had issues like in middle school that are areas that need to be done right away. So we would do that right away in the morning for everybody to came in and get that done. You know, it's a, it's an ongoing battle. That's all I can say. I mean, it's-
So it is being done?
Whenever possible.
Okay, whenever possible.
And then some might be done at night when they're done too as well, if there's a done during the hallways and rooms, so you know, it just depends upon staffing and times, really.
And then just the one last comment is, on this, there is no date. So whenever this gets revised, I'm kind of a date person, because it's like if I've got more than one, which is the most current.
Put a date on.
Yep. That's good.
Yeah, I was working on the template. Sorry about that. That was-
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just adding a date.
I have a question for Steve, though. With this spraying of this, what constitutes or the spraying of certain areas in?
Well, you know, remember-
Who makes that discretion?
Well, it's, it always was on to the staffing issue for one thing always, it's like that the people that do it. You know, we aren't every other day cleaning in those areas. Only, only spot in the school that for education purpose that gets cleaned every day via kindergarten day. So we're still every other day cleaning. We have been since, since I've been here. So, but if we have an issue, we try to address it right away if we know that. Say, second floor was a problem, let's catch that. That's what we're doing. But we are still every other day cleaning possible, because we're all, we're all through COVID too.
You're COVID too, okay. But as far as addressing, you know, the spraying and for when you are, because we all do know we're having an issue at elementary, especially certain, let's say, second grades or whatever, then do you get in there right away and?
Well, students have to be gone, of course.
Well, yes. So it is addressed?
Yeah, we'll catch the hallways, catch the clot or the, the, all the general areas for sure we can catch. And, you know, we'll do, go down to the lockers as well, get a little spray. But you have to be careful too, because, you know, one thing you always remember too is that the product that we're spraying is a chlorine-type product as well, and it rusts everything. So we must only be careful with the furniture. You can see how the rust has taken some of our furniture just because things are metal and are welded. So, you know, it's, it's a double exhorting.
Any other questions?
Thank you for this, because I was gonna say this should be added, because I just had a kid with COVID and I didn't send my other kids to school because they're in the city.
You're being responsible.
Yeah, I was trying, but you know, but I think that was a big issue with parents. It was a big issue. I think that will make a big change, hopefully. My only other thing-
Our nurses are recommending that.
Yes. Allowing people to have been, who have been tested for COVID to return to in-person prior to receiving the test result might be another thing to look at adding.
Could you repeat that again?
To allow, to not, to not allow people who have been tested for COVID to return in-person until they have in fact received their test results stating that they are negative, they can go back, because we've, that caused a, an issue.
So, so I'm just gonna say that my opinion is that what you just said, just now, completely invalidated what you said about this document. Because I was going to say, I would never personally support this document at all. Because, and the reason I wouldn't is because of what you just said second. So, if we're forcing the staff and students to stay out of the buildings until the family member who is positive has run their course and is now out of isolation, what would be the point of the siblings or the parent, let's say a parent of a, let's say a staff member who's a parent of a student in our district, to come into the building? I mean, what's the point of getting the test then? Because you just said, oh, well, if they get the test. But this one doesn't allow for a test.
This, this one is saying that if, if my son has COVID.
Yes.
My daughter and other daughter will not be in school
Yes.
until my son has cleared his time and my, these other two are fine.
That is what this says. I agree with you. Yes, it does.
What I'm saying about allowing kids, so let's say I went in and I'm a teacher and I got tested for COVID because I'm at the point where I think I'm really sick, I can't taste it, I probably have COVID. It only takes a day to get those results back. I did, we did a COVID test last night. I had my results within a day. So I should be able to come back, I get a negative the next day to come back if we're-
What about your child?
What are you talking about?
Couldn't your child come back if they get a negative test?
If, if they had a negative-
In your view, couldn't they come back if they had a negative test?
While one is a positive?
Let's say your son is positive and your daughter has, under this, your daughter would, wouldn't be allowed to come to school till your, your son is out of isolation and would come back himself.
Because I can tell you from firsthand, what happens is one kid gets it and the other kid in your house, three days later, is also going to have it.
But with all due respect, I'm actually asking you literally, or anybody, what if your daughter gets a negative test?
Right.
So you, right what?
Which, which did happen with one of our kids also.
Right, so should your daughter then be allowed, if your daughter got a negative test, could your daughter come to school?
I, which is what we had in our policy, right? This kid could have COVID and you can go to school, but then we have these spikes, right? So I think in order to try to mitigate that, because usually what happens is if one kid gets it, the other kid gets it.
I, I respect that, but what was your point then? I'm trying to understand your point about who would be the people getting the test?
This would be a totally different thing. So this, this would be a sibling that I'm talking about. I'm talking about, I don't have any kids. I'm a single teacher and I'm to the point where I personally think I have COVID.
So you want a separate rule for adults?
No, no, I'm not talking, these are two, I'm not talking about-
I know, and you're now no longer talking about the siblings.
I'm a, I'm a single person.
Okay, okay.
And I have no kids.
Yeah.
And I'm sick.
Yeah.
And I think I have COVID. To the, to, I'm sick to the point where I'm going to go get myself COVID tested.
I get it.
And let's say for whatever reason, I don't get my results in 24 hours, though you should get your result within 24 hours. Let's say I don't get my result.
Okay.
I should wait?
You're advocating for you to wait.
Personally wait an extra day or call and say, can I get my test result?
I, I, I'm acknowledging that, so.
That's what I'm saying. So, so two different things.
So I want to be sure you have, you want to have a, you are advocating to have a separate set of rules for adults than you are for siblings, even if the unsick sibling has had a negative COVID test result.
No, what I'm saying is, I, I hear what you're, I hear what the point you're trying to make.
I'm sorry, what?
I, I understand what you're saying. Even if, even if it's a child.
Yeah, I hear the point you're saying is-
The first child in the home, they go get tested. They shouldn't come to school, is what she's saying, until their test results.
I accept that. That's not my point.
Okay.
My point is another person in the home who has gotten a negative test. If you got a negative test two days later, but your sibling has already tested positive and now has this five or seven or 12 or 10-day quarantine period, I'm, I'm actually serious. Why would we penalize the child who, who has been proven to be COVID-negative?
Because they could be, you have to get that timing just right to get that positive, right? It's a, it, there's a sliver of time, correct?
It's like seven to 10 days.
You have to hit it just right. So it's like, you don't know. And do I know all the science behind it?
I'm not saying I don't either.
But I think if we can look at the numbers and say, oh, we're really having a little bit of an issue here, maybe we should err a little bit more on the side of caution to try to get things under wraps. I think with everyone being gone for the holidays, it will help. Who knows? I don't know. But that, that's my, that's my two cents. I hear the point you're making. I respectfully disagree.
Sure.
And I think David has tried to focus on that from the beginning, saying, if you're ill, you know, a lot of emails come out mainly, don't come to school.
Right.
That should have been the last 100 years.
All I was saying that if you're negative, you should be able to come to class, because having a negative test proves that you're not ill. That's all I was saying.
At, at a moment in time.
At the time you had your test. At the time you had your test. I get it.
I'm supportive of this.
Sure.
At this time, given the current state of affairs, and we have the ability at any board meeting to adjust these as we see fit. But at this time, this makes sense to me, because I'm, I'm aware of situations within my workplace where exactly what you're saying, Kevin, is, oh, this individual's wife is tested positive for COVID. Their spouse goes and gets a test right away and says I'm negative, and then two days later they test positive. And I don't claim to be the understanding of what the incubation period of time is and when someone is. So, not being an expert in that, I agree with the concept of erring on the side of caution at this moment in time for our school, because we're experiencing high levels of COVID and, and concern. We're, we very much do everything we can to keep kids in school all the time. I think we have a history as a board of doing that. But I also think it's appropriate for us to look at the current state of affairs. And if putting in what I think are minor challenges and protections that we think would be protections, it's just appropriate for us to do it.
CDC guidance is, if there's a child at home, sibling, after day five, they get tested and then day seven would be, that's how the CDC has it then.
Right. And I, I think we should, yeah, definitely.
Now, I agree with Kevin that I can't support that because-
Now, I agree with Kevin that I can't support that because now you add in the other variable that maybe one of the children or somebody else in the home had previously had COVID. And the likelihood of them getting it again is gonna be very small. I personally haven't met anybody who has had it twice.
Oh, cause they haven't had it on.
Yes, yes. So what I'm saying is, yes, if my sibling had it five, six months ago, then they're not gonna get it again. I haven't met anybody that has had this happen to yet.
We should listen to the news, cause they claim you can get it.
Yes.
It's, it's what you know.
I haven't met a person yet. So that's why I can't support it because you are potentially denying others that have had recently had it, that opportunity to come to school. And as we all know, this entire situation has big mental health ramifications. So I, I think it goes back to the common sense thing.
Yeah.
Like David has been preaching the entire time, if you're sick, stay home. But it's going to be a little bit unique for every situation, but this is just a blanket and a cookie cutter template that does not work for, for every situation.
Instead of, and if unvaccinated, can we put the Aaron Rodgers language in there? I'm, I'm being serious, I mean, in essence.
I hear what you're saying.
Whatever that term would be.
That immunization more or less.
Their own immunization from query.
Yeah, from required.
The trite and true method of getting the.
That isn't the worst idea.
I think at times where we're debating whether you can get it twice and, um, trusting on people's common sense that the safe, I think I heard liability mitigating in a, in a different context. Like there's an opportunity to go to the CDC guidelines that exist and say, what, what are the people who claim to be experts in this? And I, my intention is not to get into a debate on that, but it's very supportive of this. It is not supportive of relying on people's common sense and it's not supportive of, of many of these other positions as I would argue that the CDC guidelines in this scenario are significantly more restrictive than what we're proposing here with this language.
Do I take it to vote?
Yeah, we're, well, we have a motion, right? No, we don't have a motion yet.
No, we don't, no, that's, yeah.
Is there a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Because I mean, we, we haven't really discussed the whole Monday, Tuesday thing yet, which I think is part of it, or you're just doing that, right? You're just doing that.
It's later.
This doesn't need a vote, I wouldn't think.
No, that's later, Kevin. So I'm gonna make the motion that we go to the safe return in person and we do add in the addition into return in-person document. Is that correct?
So you're saying as written, you wanted to.
No, I wanna add this, yes.
As you asked.
This isn't, this isn't anything.
No, that.
This isn't, there's, this isn't separate on the agenda.
This is, no.
I understand, I was just saying, this isn't part of it.
No, I'm not on that.
Right.
Right.
I'm not, I didn't.
We have a motion by Zebro, second by Barnes, to approve, uh, the safe return to in-person and continuity of services plan to include recommended addition to return to in-person document, the language of which was read earlier. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You voted yes, right Amy? Okay, motion passes.
Was it just Kevin and?
No, and Peter. So it was, uh, five, three. Thank you.
One, two, three, four.
Four, three.
Makes sense.
Five, three. It's five, three, that's eight.
It's eight.
Sorry.
Oh, Matt, sorry. Sure.
Item 14A, discussion, elementary school playground.
Yeah, I just wanted this discussion only, uh, the, some of the board members have asked about this document because it's so popular, the new play area at the elementary school that is, um, soft material with no pea gravel, um, and, and this is something that I just want you to be aware of. We got the quote, I'm not recommending we, we do this at this point, but we have added that the 10-year construction needs. Um, I have talked to staff, students even, um, at the elementary school and some parents. That pea gravel piece is, it is problematic and it does, you know, it comes in the kids' shoes and, I mean, it's, you know, the teachers will talk to you about it, the custodians will talk to you about it because it comes into the school and, and it can be problematic. I just wanted to make the board aware of what it would cost to fully do that project. Uh, not because I'm recommending it at this time, but if it is something in the future, it does now sit on the 10-year construction needs, uh, document.
Mr. Kaiser? Or it's being added to?
Yeah, I just want, um, on this document you see in front of you, um, one thing that's not included in that is actually our work on our side. So if you were to look at that site, all the pea gravel, all the equipment, that's my responsibility to be removed. Now do the two local contractors. So just be aware, it's about a $40,000, it gets for me to tear all that out. So you got about $600,000, um, in rendering to do that playground, that's what it sits today. Just those costs are out short of that document.
Just wanted the board to be aware of that.
And who is the responsible entity for choosing where in the priority listing it goes?
That would be the board.
That would be us.
Board does.
The board would determine that.
Okay, so it should probably come onto the agenda next month then.
We could do that in, uh.
I mean, it's on here kind of, it's just a line item, but there's no priority number or dollars yet.
So Michelle and Steve, why don't we put that on, uh, finance for next month?
I don't remember ever in my tenure doing the priority, prioritizing.
Well, probably, we haven't done anything that's on the list since you got on.
Well, Brady and Steve, uh, my first year, Brady and Steve put together this document, so that was some time ago.
And I think.
It was, nothing prioritized it for us as a board, but my recollection of the bigger one is there was, there were timelines identified, which there were scores placed to exigency and lifespan of certain things for us in the, in the bigger, broader.
It was consolidated down to what you have.
Right.
But the priorities, I mean, some are life expectancy things, but to the point, you know, it was, it was your decision, of course, to pull trigger any one of those that you feel more priority to it. But that's what you have.
And it changes too.
Well, I'll give you an example, the, the number one priority is the pool upgrades, but that kind of falls down as the pool continues to be not having a sand filter issue. But once the sand filter goes on, we're, we're gonna have to fix it like ASAP.
That's what I said, it kind of changes with that.
And that's sitting at 25, 26 years of life. We've done a great job of upkeep and maintenance, but there's certain aspects of that pool that once they go down, we'll, we'll need to commit right away to making those changes.
I would say it's also like the auditorium piece, you know, there is a lot that auditorium makes that function properly, right? But, um, we've did a lot of work just to take care of some of the bigger items. So, you know, that's buying us time, we need to do that anyway. So we've been knocking off portion of those priorities, when we deem that they really gotta get done, taken care of. So that, that list in front of you has kind of morphed.
Thank you for that report. Item 15A is WASB report.
All right, we have the convention coming up in January and please let Amy know, I believe it by November 20th, we get that break?
December 15th.
Oh, so you got a little time to decide that. There is in your school news, it gives you kind of the whole outrun of that. It starts on page six. And then also we were sent a link and it even has pre-convention workshops and you can click on that and see what's going on with that.
Yep, so she just referenced the school news, the WASB document. It's very good, it's very detailed, but it'll talk about the convention, um, and all the different aspects of that.
And then we also have it in an email, which you can really click on and get more information from.
The issue, the issue before that one had some really good, I think, three articles on mental health.
Okay.
So I think it would be worthwhile if you didn't have a chance to read it. Really good stuff, concerning stuff.
That concludes my report.
And CISA nine report we have in writing here, so Mr. Kaiser is not here. Future agenda items.
I think we've established in the December meeting that we're gonna have an update about the construction needs in pers, in the finance committee.
And there was also a discussion at the agenda setting meeting, Diane, Mr. Muniz, me, uh, to add as a standing issue every December, Amy, that, uh, we would discuss stewardship of the district's finances with the legal budget adjustment to review fund balance to fund, uh, fund 46? Is that?
Right.
Forget exactly what.
We, we had talked, big picture, 30,000 feet.
Yeah, that's right.
To regularly look at possible percentages.
Right.
Um, and to have a, a discussion about percentages and a regular adjustment, uh, to the capital improvement fund. Um, the board's commitment to that, which I'm thankful for, the last two and a half years has put us in a very positive situation to be able to handle a lot of this ourselves internally.
Any other future agenda items?
Question I have is on this 10-year construction needs, it appears to me as if some of these things were already done.
Yeah, we can post for that in December and have a answer to all of those questions in December.
Okay, Amy, is there, I'm.
We're, we're just in future agenda items right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm kind of, that's kind of what I'm referring to, is maybe.
She wants to know whether or not this document could be updated for the future.
Well, I'd like to know, you know, next, for next month, I mean, which one of these, you know, can we highlight what we're actually working on or what's done or, I don't know, you know.
Get an update.
When they're done, are they pulled off? Because to me, it looks like there's still some on here.
Maybe a discussion at the next board meeting about the entire document itself.
We'll give you a full update.
How do things get on there? Who's prioritizing and maybe is it up to date?
I just wanna know what's working on, you know, what's being worked on.
Yep, no problem.
There's no date on the bottom, right?
Yeah, there is.
Oh, there is, I'm sorry, I forgot.
But, I mean.
We did get that.
I mean, cause football and baseball field lighting is on there. I thought we did that.
We did football.
Oh, but not the baseball. Oh, okay.
I wonder if the city did the softball, I think.
But not baseball.
Yeah, baseball, they're not gonna do it just now.
Um, that's, yeah, our, we own the, we own the baseball fields, not the softball fields.
And they own softball field.
Right.
Any other agenda items, so we'll add that.
I just wanna know what's being worked on.
Get an update.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, hearing none, item 17, uh, 17A, closed session. The board will go into close the executive session pursuant to section 19.85, parent one, parent C of the state statutes for the purpose of considering employment and compensation of public employees and section 19.85, parent one, parent F for the purposes of discussing disciplinary data.
I will make that motion.
Motion by Gorman, second by Zebro, roll call, please.